Good morning. The Guam Legislature is back in session. Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, as we discussed yesterday for Bill Number 376-32, the bill that proposes to require an independent economic impact statement relative to minimum wage on Guam, when we left, the concern was who's going to pay for it. And so I have passed around an amendment. It should be on everybody's desk. And in communication with the front office, they reiterated what they had said earlier, and that was that the Department of Labor and GITA will be the ones to identify the resources internally to carry out the study. So the amendment is for section, under Section 1, and it would go on line 8. "The Department of Labor, in collaboration with the Guam Economic Development Authority, shall identify the resources necessary to fund the independent economic impact statement to determine the study parameters, to collect the data, and to synthesize the data." So they will be the ones to find those resources and to work collaboratively to put out the proposal for that. So that's the amendment that's proffered. And then, of course, if it passes, then we would strike Section 2 on page 2.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita. Do you have that amendment in writing?
Yes, it has been passed out.
Okay. So on the Yamashita amendment, I see Senator Sniklas, Senator Sniklas, Senator Aragon. He says you can go first.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker, and thank you very much for that amendment. I just have a general comment in regards to the nature of the amendment that's being proffered. Although I appreciate the funding source by the Guam Economic Development Authority, it provides a lot of flexibility in terms of the agency moving out there to the community and getting it privately sourced. So, I mean, obviously, if we're going to have, provide that flexibility, I just need to understand that that's the intent of the amendment, is to either have the Guam Economic Development Authority identify within its resources to be able to commission this study, or if they have that flexibility to go out to a private firm so that they can conduct this, or even further communicate with the University of Guam and see if, in fact, they can provide assistance. So there are different options that are available, and that's why I just want a little bit of clarity in terms of what avenue where we will be extending the Guam Economic Authority in terms of proceeding and identifying resources to carry out this study.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita. Will you yield?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I think what has just been described is a really good description of the various options. And while I would prefer not to prescribe by detail what GITA and Department of Labor will do, I think just what the previous speaker said, our options are menu items on their table to decide what is in the best interest.
Okay. Senator Aragon?
Okay. I appreciate that response, and certainly, obviously, we still have the oversight responsibility of trying to ensure that there's no perception of a conflict of interest when it comes to any of our private sector partners stepping up and saying, hey, we want to contribute to this process through the Guam Economic Development Authority. So I will not question that. I just wanted to acknowledge that there are different options available. So thank you very much to the sponsor of the legislature.
Thank you, Senator Aragon. Senator Sniklas?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I could please request for just a minute, so I can pull together. I do have a proposed amendment to the amendment that I would like to proffer to the body.
Okay. We'll take a minute recess.
Good morning. This legislature is back from recess. Senator Mike Sniklas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the amendment and the direction that it sets us in with the ability for us to be able to identify how the study is going to be funded. I just wanted to make a couple of adjustments here as an amendment to the amendment, and it's been circulated. The first is I want to separate the functions that are being outlined in the amendment. The first function is the funding source function, and that part of it will be handled by the Guam Economic Development Authority in collaboration with the Department of Labor. So we're putting a period at the end of that statement. And then we're adding, and we're addressing, the second part of the amendment, which is to collect the data, study the parameters, and synthesize the data. First of all, the original amendment kind of puts the onus on the Department of Labor to study the parameters, collect the data, and synthesize the data. But the overall bill, and the intention of the overall bill, is to allow for an independent economic statement, and for that independent economic impact statement to be done by a contracted third party. And so I think that probably on that second section of the amendment, what we need to do is, instead of having the Department of Labor determine the study parameters, collect the data, and synthesize the data, we should just have the Department of Labor collaborate with the University of Guam to determine the study parameters, but then we go out and we contract a third party to go out and do the study. So instead of the University of Guam being the one to do the study, they kind of say, okay, if we're going to increase the minimum wage, these are the things you want to look at, A, B, C, D. And they collaborate with the Department of Labor to get their concurrence that those things are worth studying. And then they go out and they contract the third party to go and actually gather the data and report back their findings. And so right now, the way the amendment's written is, it kind of puts the onus back on the Department of Labor to study the parameters, collect the data, and synthesize the data, when that should really be the third party that gets, the third-party independent entity that they contract out. But the only thing that I think we really need to make sure gets addressed is the parameters itself. Because in the earlier part of the bill, in Section 1, we kind of outlined certain parameters, and I was going to attempt to make amendments to add on to those parameters, but I really think, to simplify the bill, and I'll get into that later, we should just allow the Department of Labor and the University of Guam to kind of create the general parameters, and then go out and contract a third party to go and actually effectuate the study. So my amendment to the amendment is what I passed around, that separates out the funding question, which will be funded by the Guam Economic Development Authority to the Department of Labor, and separates out the parameter question of exactly what it is that the study is going to entail, and that will involve the Department of Labor in collaboration with the University of Guam. But again, ultimately, the final study will be done by the third party, the independent third party that is contracted as outlined by the bill. And so that's the amendment to the amendment that I'm proposing.
Thank you, Senator Sniklas. On the amendment to the amendment, Senator Yamashita, did you wish to chime in on this one?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have no objections to the proposed amendment. I think it, while there may have been some concern about UOG, honestly, UOG is a good place to include in this. It will, this amendment ensures that Labor and GITA are going to work with UOG, and they're still going to request proposal for a study for doing this. So they'll do that, and then these three entities will be the ones to guide it, to move it, to ensure that it's going to happen. So I have no objection to this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita. Anybody else on the Sniklas amendment? If not, are there any objections? If there are no objections, motion carries. Senator Sniklas, are you done? Senator Yamashita, I think we're on the main amendment, based on the amendment that just passed. So it would be the Yamashita amendment as amended. And please proceed.
And so I, that's all I can say about my amendment. And I have another amendment, which began to strike out.
Section 2. Okay. So we'll go ahead and take care of the amendment first, and then I'll go back to you. On the Yamashita amendment, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, no objection, motion carries. Senator Yamashita, you still have the floor.
Sorry. Thanks. And so my second amendment is on page 2, Section 2, line 21 to strike, lines 21, 22, and 23.
On that, on that motion to delete, I'll have Vice Speaker, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
I'm sorry.
There's a motion to delete lines 21, 22, and 23 on.
I'm sorry. I tweeted about it on the screen on the, on the third amendment, if I wanted to page down.
Okay. I'll go ahead. Senator Yamashita, if, I'll go ahead and yield. I've gavelled it in legal.
Point of order, then. I'll just do a motion to reconsider the action of the body. That'll permit the body to go.
Yes. On the motion to reconsider, without any objection, motion carries. Thank you, Majority Leader. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I support this legislation. When we were discussing the minimum wage bill, I agreed that we can and should have an economic impact study. And so I support the intent of this legislation. I announced it several times that I would support it, and I'm in full support of the bill. My only concern, Madam Speaker, are the dates. It just seemed to me that on or before January 6, January 1, 2016, is a long time away. And I was, when I originally introduced the minimum wage bill last May, last March, it was, the increases were to go into effect January of 2015, January 2016, and January of 2017. At this rate, for sure, we will not be able to do a 2016 increase. And I'm concerned about that. But the dates throughout the bill would move it all the way until the end of June, I mean, July 31, to be sent to the Speaker. The possibility of it being passed would be the end of 2016. And so there would be no other increase possible until the beginning of 2018. And so the second and third increases that I had proposed in my initial legislation on minimum wage would be completely obviated. I'm not opposed to the study, it's just I think we can and should move a little faster. Writing up the, getting the university and GITA and everybody to collaborate, yes, a few months, but 12 months to write the parameters of what needs to be done? It would seem to me that if we could move, the, change that date, January 1, 2016, to June 1 of 2015, it would still give everybody six months. They would still have to have the RFP go out. It would probably take several months. They probably wouldn't start the study until the beginning of 2016, which was the intent anyway, was to give a full year of implementation. But if you don't send the RFP out, or the RFP doesn't need to go out until January 1 of 2016, we won't be studying it until sometime in mid or early 2016. It just seems to me if the collaboration starts after this is passed, June of 21st of 2015, it's the study, or, I'm not the study, but the collaboration is completed and the parameters are written, and it's announced at that point to start the study after the first year of implementation on the 1st of January 2016, to study that year, and to have a report out, I think we can move this a little faster. So I would at least, on the first part, just ask to change the date of the RFP going out to June 1 of 2015. And there'll be other dates that I need to change later. But just the start of the RFP process, I mean, we, it took us a year to try to even get the law tried to be amended, and I'm not even sure we're going to finish it today. But just to try to do something about the RFP process starting early, and the study could start on the 1st of January 2016, I would have no objection to that. It's just we need to get the process started so that people are in place and doing things right after the 1st of the year. So if there's no objection, I'd like to change the date on the first line to June 1 of 2015.
And that would be on page 195?
Correct.
Okay. On that motion, ladies and gentlemen, are there any objections? Anyone wanting to speak? Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I have no objections to this. Certainly, there seems to lack, throughout the government, continuously a sense of urgency. And so I appreciate moving the deadline up. I think the parameters of what needs to be studied, pretty much everybody knows, those of us who've been paying attention, those of us who know what wages do to businesses and to families. So it really won't be difficult to carve it out into issues. So I have no objections to moving it up six months.
On the motion, are there any objections? Anyone wanting to speak? If not, no objections? Motion carries. Vice Speaker Cruz, you still have the floor. Are you okay with that? Or did you want to make any other changes to the dates?
Yes, Madam Speaker. There is another date, and the way.
Vice Speaker, if I may, just make sure that the clerks get a copy of the date change.
Oh, no, that's just, that was the only date. I just needed that date changed on the amendment.
So for the record, the motion carries, Section 3105.1, on line 5 was changed to June of 1st, 2015. And I'm going to go back, take the amendment as amended as a whole. So Senator Yamashita, you're now recognized again.
Well, now I'm trying to process in my mind. So, but now we need to change the other dates in here?
Yeah, we need to vote on the amendment.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Okay, thank you. Nothing.
So on the main amendment, are there any objections? As amended, no objections? Motion carries. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motions? I saw Senator Duennius, and then Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Chris Duennius?
Yes.
I do apologize, Senator Duennius. Excuse my jet lag here.
Sure.
I did address Senator Yamashita for an additional amendment.
Sure.
To, she was going to do a deletion. So let's complete that one. Senator Yamashita, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So my next amendment is to delete Section 2 on page 2, lines 21, 22, and 23, as they are no longer needed.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Yamashita. On that motion, no objection? Motion carries. Thank you, Senator Yamashita. Then I recognize Senator Chris Duennius, and Vice Speaker Cruz.
Senator S. Vaziri, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for the opportunity to rise, of course, in full support of this measure, 376, I believe. You know, Madam Chair, as I listened to the proffering of amendments earlier, I have to say that I really appreciated the dialogue and the intensity to which the concentration was put on funding sources. And a number of senators spoke to the issue of fiscal notes and the responsibility of ensuring that the funding sources are there. I, I'm optimistic and eternally hopeful that that continues, especially in light of a recent bill that I introduced in the last session and was put on the agenda. And looking at the history of that, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, there's no less than three bills that were accompanying that same fiscal note. But the scrutiny was so intense on the funding source, even though another bill was introduced and heard on this floor, and one was passed under the same fiscal note, yet the previous bill was sent back to committee, which is okay. My understanding is there's a lot of folks that were very successful in this election which intend to see out the fruition of that opportunity that bill may bring. But I just wanted to celebrate the fact that, that this is where we are, and I'm sure this will continue going forward. You know, Madam Speaker, I also have to remember the intense debate that circulated around the bill to increase the minimum wage. And you had everything in the testimony from a gentleman who owns a bushcutter business that he built from the ground up over the last 10 years, to individuals who are responsible for hundreds of millions of dollars of investment coming into Guam, debating, and the number of hearings on this bill. And, and Madam Speaker, what was interesting was, at the end, and it seemed counterintuitive, and actually, there was a lot of back and forth in the, in the media, particularly on one particular talk show, about how and why would the study be deleted? And Madam Speaker, I was so happy that my good colleague, Senator Yamashita, introduced this bill several days after all of the debate and the final bill passed with regard to the compromised version of the minimum wage increase. And I'm proud to stand here today to say that it was several members of the chamber that actually came and requested that that be deleted. And the reason why, Madam Speaker, is because there was a sidebar debate as to the veracity of the studies, and I commend the good Vice Speaker. He did one bang-up job in terms of the, the research behind the bill that was introduced and debated and finally became public law. But there was another debate to that as well, as to whether or not, you know, I have full faith and confidence in our, in our wonderful university and all the professors and everyone who participated in, in the final committee report on the bill. But as I said, of the cadre of individuals that came forward, there was a discussion as to whether or not that was a balanced approach to market forces and other things that impact the very measure that was introduced. And so now, finally, for the record, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, and I, once again, I celebrate the fact that my good colleague, Senator Yamashita, rose to the occasion immediately, introduced this bill, so that the true intent of members of this body would be understood, that there was never a desire to not have the study. It was never a part of the compromise to say, "We don't need to study this." It was a movement forward to ensure that the study would be balanced, and that all interest of the community, just like all interest of those who came forward, to express themselves on the potential impact of the original version of the proposed bill would be heard. And so, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, I say that, in closing, I certainly, in voting in the affirmative on this bill, I'm going to celebrate two things. One is, is a renewed commitment that I see here, to be ultra-detailed on the insurance of a funding source for every bill that comes to this floor, to support it, and a fiscal note. And also, Madam Speaker, a commitment to ensure that when you talk about a study, it's not just one person's version of a study, or one side's individual thought of a study, but a study as even many amendments were put in by many retiring speakers. To be as comprehensive, yet not take forever, but be comprehensive and representative of all sectors of our community, to ensure that when something as critical as mandating a minimum wage, trying to help all concerned, is truly vetted properly. Thank you, Madam Chairman. And once again, I, I celebrate and look forward to voting in the affirmative on Bill 376. Sijismosi.
You're welcome, Senator Duennius. Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized on the main motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. As the bill was originally introduced, there was going to be a, maybe a six-month period within which the study was going to be done, and a report to the legislature by July 30th of 2016, 2016 provided. Madam Speaker, I'd just like to, to ask the colleagues that, we all know what happens in July and August of any election year. It's going to be very difficult. July of 2016 will be the budget, and then there's going to be election, and it's just going to be a difficult time to try to, to address a minimum wage that close to the election. So it would seem to me that if we could, since the RFP's going to be going out six months early, and we want a year of data to study, that if we could, on line 19, page two, change the date from June 30th, 2016, to March 30th, 2016, the individuals or the consulting company that's doing the study would have three months within which to have all the data as of the end of December. But if the, if the RFP actually goes out on June the 1st of 2015, they would have been collecting data from June, I mean, from September to the end of the year. They would have all that by March, and hopefully by April the 30th, would be able to report to the legislature and give us time to be able to pass something that, that isn't on the eve of a primary or on the general election. I mean, I, I know there was a lot of pressure that I placed on the body when I introduced the bill last March, and it was deemed to be a, you know, a, a political ploy. If we could just move the dates back so it's not so close to the election, and we've given enough time to the study to be done, because we are starting earlier, or at least getting the RFP out earlier, and the consulting company or whoever's going to be doing it is already collecting the data, by the, by the 30th of March, a completed study should be ready, and by the 30th of April, a report could be made to the, to the Guam Legislature. It's only a few months shorter than what's in this bill, but I just really don't want it to be that close to the election. So I'd like to be able to, to change on line 19, June to, to March, and July to April, on line 20.
Thank you. Vice Speaker, on the motion. Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, Madam Speaker, I appreciate the date changes. I think it's reasonable. I think, again, that anybody who is engaged in this type of decision-making, study evaluation, is really already aware of the type of data, the type of streams that need to be created, and how to watch for it. So I think once the proposal is out, and once the responses are made, and the firm is, or the consultants, or whomever it's going to be, are chosen, they will be able to set forward and start collecting the data. And I do agree with the mover of this amendment that it is very, very likely that all of this can be gathered and can be synthesized and presented in a report form for this body. So I support the amendment of the dates. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita. Anyone else? Senator Sniklis? On the main motion. Okay, on the motion, on the date changes on page two, on line 19, from June to March, and then on line 20, from July to April. Are there any objections? No objections? Motion carries. Senator Sniklis, you're recognized on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do have a second amendment that I have circulated. This amendment is intended to just kind of tighten up who we do contract for the, for the completion of the economic, the independent economic impact study. And as the bill is currently written, there really are no guidelines or parameters as to who, who we do, in fact, contract with to do this study. And so I've circulated an amendment to line 18, on second page, and the amendment will read, "The independent economic impact statement shall be completed," and the new language is, "by an economist with a master's degree or PhD in economics from an institution of higher learning accredited by an accreditation agency recognized by the U.S. Secretary of Education." And then it will continue on. On my, on my proposed amendment, though, I do, I would like for the legal counsel to be authorized to make the technical corrections, the changes from June 30th to March 30th, and from July 30th to April 30th, to reflect the most recent amendments by the retiring speaker. But this language that I'm proposing is intended to, I guess, put a requirement in for who exactly we do contract to do this study. We don't want just anybody to be contracted by, by the Department of Labor to do this economic impact study. It does need to be done by a qualified professional, preferably an economist, who I think would be most aptly suited, to be able to evaluate the various parameters that the government establishes for this study in order for us to be able to determine its true impact on the community. So that is my amendment, Madam Speaker. And again, the sole intention of this amendment is to create the, the minimum qualifications of the individual or, or company that we're looking for to do this study. And if there are any other additions that may be suggested in order to tighten up that language, I'm very open to it. Thank you, Madam Speaker. It has been circulated, Madam Speaker.
On, on the amendment, Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I actually have two thoughts to the proposed amendment. The first is, while of course I do not disagree that somebody with competency set should be able to do this, I would ask that we, the way it's written, it sounds, it seems like, the way I interpret it, that this statement shall be completed by a person who has certain degree, a certain degree or accomplishment. What I would like to say is that the independent economic impact statement shall be completed by an identified group that includes an economist with a master's degree or PhD in economics. Madam Speaker, what we're going to be doing here is, when the request for proposal goes out, there's going to be a request to gather the data to, or to identify the data sets, to gather the data, to garner it, to review it, and it may not necessarily be by this one person. This person perhaps will probably have associates who don't have any, who are not an economist, so to speak, but they are a group. They are a team. They have associates, they have assistants, who may have not reached the accomplishment of earning a master's or a doctorate in economics. So while I agree that somebody with that competency, that accomplishment should be involved in this, that perhaps if the mover of the amendment, I would be open to saying it will be completed by an identified group, and that identified group would go through that procurement process, right? There's going to be a bid for proposals, and they will have to say that this person, this, whoever's going to get this bid has to have an economist in it, but it's not solely this one person who's going to do this. But it would be an identified group that includes, and that would be my amendment to this amendment, shall be completed by an identified group. There might be a better word for the word "group," but identified group that includes an economist with a master's degree or PhD in economics from an institution of higher learning accredited by an accreditation agency recognized by the U.S. Secretary of Education.
Okay, so the amendment to the amendment would say, would, shall be completed?
By an identified group that includes.
That includes. That includes, not would. Okay. On that amendment, Senator Duennius, did you wish to speak on Yamashita's amendment to the amendment? Please proceed.
Sijismosi, Madam Chair, and that's, I'm sorry, I had to sort through my desk, but yeah, to get the original amendment. And I agree with the retiring speaker. I, the reason why, as I heard the amendment being read out, I, it kind of piqued my interest, was because of exactly what I just said earlier. It was, it was identified that there was a desire for a balanced point of view from the perspective of the university and, and the very level of education, which I completely agree with here, that's identified in terms of the preparation of testimony for the original bill that was discussed and passed into law on the minimum wage. And so having that level, certainly, of acumen, education, is definitely important, but should be part and parcel of a consortium of individuals that would make up the response to the RFP so that you had that, that, that balanced perspective as well. And so that's why I rise certainly in, in support of the amendment to the amendments. Sijismosi, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Duennius. Senator, are there anyone else wishing to speak on, on Yamashita's amendment? Senator Sniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have no objections. I think it's a very good amendment to the amendment.
Okay. So on the amendment, on Yamashita's amendment to the main amendment, are there any objections? No objection? Motion carries. Senator Sniklis, we're still on Senator Sniklis's amendment, and before we move, since you asked for that technical motion, can you just do the motion to change the dates so we can get that clarified right now? And then I'll.
Sure, Madam Speaker. Just a motion to change the date, as I circulated, it was the original language of June 30th, 2016, that'll change to March 30th, 2016, and the language that reads July 30th, 2016, will change to April 30th, 2016, to be, to accurately reflect previous amendments.
On that motion, without any objection? Motion carries. So we are still, we are now back to the main motion? Are there anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? Oh, I'm sorry, on the amendment? As amended. Senator Yamashita, you're recognized. On the main amendment, as amended.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Jet lag, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so my second amendment is this. The value of earning a degree from an accredited, accredited agency recognized by the U.S. Secretary of Education, of course, sets a standard, and that's important. What I am now asking for consideration is, it's, it's an issue that has been discussed by this body a couple of times, and I'm going to need help with the technical language. But this is what I'm suggesting, that, so it's an agency recognized by the U.S. Secretary of Education, and my, my profit amendment would be, or similar accreditation body recognized internationally. I have become more sensitive to international accreditation bodies that are not necessarily U.S.-related, but particularly in our part of the world, when we have accomplished economists or doctors or, who meet certain standards, for example, from the Philippines, and that's been an item in front of us a couple of times. I'm wondering if the, with the body would think that would be something to address, or if that is not a concern. I don't know enough about economics to say that that doesn't carry. I know in the world of it... carry. I know in the world of education, it carries. I don't know if it carries in the world of economics. And so I put that out. If it's a non-issue, then it is. But if it is an issue to be contended with, then I offer that amendment.
Would you like the author to yield?
Yes, I would ask the author to yield.
Senator Sniklis?
I have no objections, Madam Speaker. I think it's an excellent amendment. I think that the more we can pull on our international talent as well, for the sake of getting these kind of studies done, I think it's a great idea. So I have no objections.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Sniklis. Just for the record, can you read the amendment one more time for our colleagues?
So after the U.S. Secretary of Education amendment is, are similar accredited bodies that is recognized internationally?
On that motion, are there any objections? No objection. Motion carries. So Senator Sniklis, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to, at this time, just do a general overview of where we are, now that these amendments have passed. We've passed the initial amendment that changed subsection 3105.1 on line four. And we have this second amendment that just recently passed, that changes lines 18 through 20 on page two. And we've also struck out section two. Now, on the, on the first amendment, that changed subsection 3105.1, we put in here language that basically reads, "The Department of Labor in collaboration with the University of Guam shall determine the study parameters, period." On the second amendment now, we've stated that an economist, that the study shall be completed by an identified group that includes an economist with a master's degree or PhD in economics from an institution of higher learning accredited by an accreditation agency recognized by the U.S. Secretary of Education, or similar body recognized internationally. Now, what I would like for us to consider is, from line eight, all the way to line 17, starting with the words, "The independent economic impact statement shall, at a minimum, address the following," I'd like to proffer or suggest to the body that we consider just striking all that language. Because what all that language does is it kind of, it directs what the study parameters should be. What I would prefer, that we would leave it to the Department of Labor, the University of Guam, and the Guam Economic Development Authority, to really figure out what they think the parameters should be. And then to allow the independent contractor, or firm, or what have you, that's going to conduct the study, to be able to be free to go out there and do this study based on whatever those parameters are that they set. And the reason why I'm suggesting this is because the alternative would be for me to try and introduce additional parameters, aside from the six that are already listed. But I would rather we just, we just step away from all the parameters, and allow the experts to be able to kind of develop the framework, and then to go out and study the framework, and then report back to us the results of that study as it relates to the minimum wage increase. So that's something that I would like to put on the table, for us to consider, is just a striking from line eight, all the way to line 17. And that, and basically, what we will have, if we do strike this, is a bill that identifies who's setting the parameters, a bill that authorizes the government to go out and contract an independent group to do the study based on those parameters. And we kind of just step away, as policymakers, in trying to outline what those parameters should be, or what the results could possibly be. And we let them kind of just do their job as the experts. So that's something I would like to proffer at this time, Madam Speaker.
Yes. We're going to take a minute recess, so that I can have legal counsel make sure that everything was put in order, okay? The legislature is back. Senator Sniklis?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the main amendment, as amended.
On the main amendment, as amended, I'm fine. I'd just like everybody to kind of just put everything that I said, like, you know, on pause, so I don't have to repeat it all. And that's for the main motion, so I apologize.
Right. So on the amended, on the amendment as amended by Senator Yamashita, are there any objections? On the main motion, I mean, on the main amendment as amended, Senator Sniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So again, as I've stated earlier, just, I would like for the body to consider
The deletions.
The deletion from line eight through line 17, now that we've, again, created the parameters, and we've identified the expertise levels that are going to be required to set those parameters and follow up with the study. And if we can just step away from even touching the parameter side, as policymakers, not the experts to do it, I would like to proffer that amendment.
On that amendment, Senator Yamashita?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Well, personally, as an evaluator, I always appreciate being given the latitude to define what the evaluation study is going to look like. I agree with the mover of this amendment, that we know, that's our work, and we know how to do that. However, this is what I, what I ask the body to talk about, and to think about. In all of the roundtables and the public hearings, the items that are itemized were the concerns that were raised, not the exact language, but essentially, and this is also essentially the language that is in public hearings, when we look to increase any kind of fees throughout our community. I don't, I, as an evaluator, don't have a, again, I appreciate being told, what do you think it should look like? And my knowledge base being trusted. And so I'm thinking, other people who would want to do an evaluation study would have that same mindset. The question I have is, as it's been made clear already, that there's going to be another discussion point about increasing the minimum wage by another dollar, and another dollar, Madam Speaker, I would ask, would this body be comfortable in, and I guess that's why he's offering amendment, the mover of this amendment, would they be comfortable in having the Department of Labor, and GITA, and UOG defining the parameters? Or do they want to make sure that what is described on page two, lines one through 16, are focused upon? Specifically, I would ask that the vice speaker chime in to say what he thinks, because he's the one driving this ship. And we would want to make sure that as he continues to drive this ship, that he has been given the kind of data to make his decisions supportive. So I'm not objecting, but I am asking for conversation. Are we comfortable in saying that Labor, and GITA, and UOG will know how to define this? Or does the Guam Legislature want to ensure that these particular targets are raised? And that's what I'm posing.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita. We have vice speaker, then Senator Ada.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, with or without the 10 lines, I would trust GITA, Labor, and the university to do this. I believe that, with all due respect to my colleagues, I thought that, in spite of the, some of the, some being credulous about the research that was done by my office, I would have thought that we would have accepted the studies that were done by the PhDs at the university. And I'm not going, you know, I'm not going to go rehash that. I'm not going to tell anybody what it should say. Just do a study, and come back to us and tell us, did it or did not tank the economy? Did it or did not? Whatever you're going to report to us. The impact is the impact. And I'm not sure, I'm not an evaluator, so I don't know whether I want everybody telling me what you, what you want in it. When we did the research for the office, we did everything we possibly could. But if the next legislature is going to be comfortable, or need something to be able to address, if it should or should not consider any further increases, then I would think that the Department of Labor, and the university, and the economists there, and GITA, understanding the impact on the economy on this island, would and should know what can and should be done. I mean, I, I would like for it to, it doesn't matter, in or out, just get the study done, so that we can move forward, and see whether or not we should be doing something else.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Tom Ada, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I agree with the retiring speaker. And I think he brought up something, insofar as, really, what I think the bill should identify, is what is the hypothesis that we want to be, to be answered? I mean, the retiring speaker says, "Do a study to either support that the implementation of a minimum wage increase was detrimental to Guam's economy, or that, in fact, it was, it had a positive impact." And so it seems to me that, you know, we've been kind of getting at, we want you to answer this question, and answer that question, and answer that question. And I imagine, in the process of their analyses, they will get to those, to those pieces of information, but then they've got to put it together to answer a certain question. And so it would seem that, really, the bill is to do a study to support, you know, if the implementation of the minimum wage increase was detrimental to Guam's economy. And it seems that, you know, we should give them that target. What are you, what do we want you to answer? I don't want you to give me a hodgepodge of, yeah, the businesses had to reduce their, they had to reduce the number of employees, but also the gross receipts were, you know, those are all the little tidbits. But what is that question that we want answered? What is the hypothesis that this study is going to either prove, or disprove, or support, or not support? So that's, you know, and again, similar to the retiring speaker, you know, we can list down the laundry list of all the questions that they should get at, but in the end, they've got to compile those findings, and they got to make the interpretation to support a certain hypothesis. And I don't think we've really indicated, what is that question that we want answered? That it was detrimental, or that it had a positive impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Anyone else on the Sniklis amendment? If not, Senator Sniklis, you can close.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Speaker. And I think that I very much agree with the dialogue, and I appreciate Senator Yamashita asking for some dialogue on this issue. Because I'm of the perspective that, if we can just step away, and let the experts come up with the parameters, you know, then we'll be able to see exactly what the outcome is, based on what they believe should be scientifically included in a final study that's reported to this body. This bill, I really think, is an incredibly, incredibly significant piece of legislation. Because what it's going to do, is it's going to kind of be referred back to on a regular basis, to drive any other future policy decisions we may make with respect to the minimum wage. And so while, you know, while on the surface it looks like it's just a study, what the good senator who introduces this bill is actually doing, is she's setting a very, very strong foundation from which any future minimum wage questions will be based upon. And by this body approving the study, what we're basically going to be doing, is we're going to be approving the backdrop by which every future question of the minimum wage will be laid upon. And so if we're going to ask for this kind of study to be done, and if the future minimum wage question is going to be based a great deal on what the results of the study are, I'm just a little leery of us having any kind of influence on what questions are asked, or what questions are answered. And I would prefer that we just turn it entirely over to the experts, who were, because the whole point of us doing this bill this way, is to try as much as possible to craft a, a study, or to get a study done, that has no biases one way or the other necessarily, but provides us with all the necessary information to be able to objectively evaluate the impact of what the minimum wage increase has done to the community. You know, did it make prices go up? It probably did. But did it also reduce the number of people who are on public assistance? It probably did. You know, did it increase some economic activity? Perhaps. You know, did it cause businesses to close? It may have. But, you know, for us to try and identify what questions need to be asked and answered, could really result in us tilting the results of the study one way or the other. Because if we just ask the questions that paint a negative picture, did, did, did the number of businesses close increase? Yes. You know, did prices go up? Yes. And if those are the only questions we ask, and those are the only questions that are answered, then all of a sudden, in the future, that's the only topic that's going to come up. You know, last time we did this, businesses closed, and prices went up. We shouldn't do it. You know, but without having the other side of the coin looked at, you know, did the economic activity pick up? Yes. Did people come off of public assistance? Yes. So the, the impact of increase in the minimum wage is, is not, and I seriously doubt it, will be a clear-cut picture, one way or the other, positive or negative. I think that we will see positive outcomes, and we will see negative outcomes. And in the end, as policymakers, we're going to have to weigh whether or not the political environment, and most especially the economic environment of the time, warrants us to be able to move any future increases forward, knowing full well what those impacts are, positive and negative. So I would, I would like for us to seriously consider not trying to get a thumbs up or a thumbs down on whether or not the minimum wage had a positive or negative impact. Because I'm really of the opinion that it would have an impact on both sides of the fence. What we need to truly see, is where those impacts were, so that as we approach this question going forward, we can look at the overall state of our economy and our community, and say, if these are, in fact, the negative outcomes of doing this, are we going to be hurting our community more than helping it? We need both sides of the coin to be, to be looked at. And so I would ask that, that we have the experts come up with the parameters. We don't touch those parameters in any way. And we let them be the ones to basically come back to us with this study, and say, these are the things that are important to look at when increasing the minimum wage, on both sides of the fence. And this is what we would like to study, and this is what we're going to report back to you on. And from there, going forward, we're able to look back on these things, and be fully informed on both sides of the issue. And that's, that's kind of why I'm proffering the amendment to strike through. And I hope that my colleagues can just, can see that it would be a good idea for us to just, as much as possible, step away, and let the experts give us all the information that we need. And, and I would like to just, with this caveat, Madam Speaker, that information needs to be local information. You know, I don't want to get a whole bunch of studies that tell us what's going on in the states. You know, the studies need to be what happened here on Guam. And perhaps it's something else that we might need to consider amending within the bill. But with respect to my amendment that I'm proffering, those are the reasons why I think it would be good for us to just kind of, kind of strike those items through, and let the experts tell us what to look at.
On the deletion, are the, are there any objections? If there are no objections, motion carries. Senator Sniklis, do you have an additional amendment that you wish to proffer?
Yeah, I would, I would probably like to limit, limit this, limit this study strictly to the impacts on Guam. You know, I mean, it does say that the economic impact statement is relative to the minimum wage increase authorized under public law 32178. But we don't specifically state that the data sets shall be limited to Guam data sets. And maybe we need to do that, so that we're, we know that the information that we're looking at isn't saying, okay, well, you know, on Guam, it went up a dollar, but this is what happened in California. I don't, I mean, granted, it's always good to look around and see what's happening elsewhere. But what we really need, what we're thirsting for so bad in this body, is actionable data that's Guam-based. So I would like to take a page from Senator Yamashita, and kind of open it up for dialogue from the body. from the body to see if there's anyone who may have a recommended amendment to limit the study and the data set strictly to Guam data. I'll be going through the bill also to try and see if there's a way for me to phrase language like that, but I'd like to just kind of leave it at that for now.
Okay, so, thank you. There's no motion proffered at the time. So you're not making the motion? You just said that you're leaving it open for discussion, but didn't make it? Because I would ask you to read your motion now, then, if you're going to proffer that now, or are you waiting for dialogue?
I would like to open it for dialogue. If there is none, I would like to ask for a brief recess so I can try and look at this and see how to craft that language.
I will go ahead and take the minute recess. This legislature's back from recess. Senator Siniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Based on conversations with my colleagues, and I'm very grateful for it, you know, the title does reference Guam, and the study is relative to a local public law, the Guam minimum wage law. And so we can, with some degree of confidence, hope and expect that our experts, who we do have set these parameters, will do so, with the understanding that it needs to be Guam-centric. But we also, as was mentioned by the author of the bill, who very wisely suggested, while we do want it to be Guam-centric, we also don't want to eliminate the ability for them to do any kind of comparison analysis on other areas using that Guam-centric data. So I'll go ahead and yield at this time, and I guess we'll have to wait and see, because this is, in my opinion, a very landmark bill. You know, we're actually trying to get information for future policy decisions, and this is a really, really big deal. And I would just very much like to commend the author for moving this item forward and for doing so in a manner that's very inclusive, and I think it's going to be a very, very good precedent for other policy issues that we undertake in this body that have impacts on the community. Because a lot of our issues that we deal with here today, Madam Speaker, need to be data-driven. And this is a really, really big step to make sure that the question of wages becomes a data-driven question going forward. So I'm very, very proud of the author for introducing this bill, and I would just like to yield on the question of the Guam-based data. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Siniklis. Anybody else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Senator Yamashita, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it truly has been an honor representing this issue. This was proffered because of the small businesses, because of the private sector saying, we want to be sure that we move forward. But honestly, also, it's proffered because of the voices of the employees who need to know better about what they can ask for, what they can want, and what they can say to their employers. You know, Madam Speaker, I was speaking to a person who's been serving as a job coach for four years, and when she first started her work, she was told she would get a dollar increase every year. And four years later, she didn't get that dollar increase. And at the end of that conversation, it was saying to this person, who never missed a day of work, who enjoyed her work, who made a difference in the person she was coaching, you need to be able to say to your employer, this is what we agreed upon, this is the kind of support I need, and this is what I should be getting. Why am I not? And so this kind of study isn't only going to show us what the revenues look like, what the business activity looks like, but it really should lend way towards conversations for how business organizations and the government truly needs to support their employees and their workforce, the human capital aspect, in doing the best that they can. And so I thank everyone for engaging in the deliberation. And, Madam Speaker, I ask that it be moved to the voting file. Thank you.
On that motion to move 376 S-32 CR to the voting file, without any objection, motion carries. Senator Adda, are you ready for your next bill? Or?
I'll do it after.
Okay. Senator Limtiake, you're recognized on 413.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to motion to move Bill 14, as amended by the -- Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to motion to move Bill 14, as amended by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, and further substituted on the floor. And I'd like the opportunity to speak on the bill.
Senator, the motion will be to accept first.
Okay.
Because this is totally new from what's put out. So on the motion then to accept the amended version and further substitute the floor without any objections, so order it. Now on the motion to place.
Yes, the motion to place Bill 14 on the second reading file and to have the opportunity to speak on it. You have 413 as further substituted on the floor.
Okay, and you're going to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 14, excuse me, Bill 413 is an act to extend the deadline for real property tax exemptions, authorize the use of the taxpayer identification number for reporting, and reduce the statute of limitations on the collection of RPT by adding a new section 24109, and by amending 24204 and 24112 each of Chapter 24, Title 11, Guam Code annotated. And, Madam Speaker, there, this bill was originally heard earlier in the 32nd Guam Legislature and was subsequently vetoed by the governor. And there were a lot of very good portions of the bill that, basically, this bill is the iteration of all that was good in the bill with some sections that allowed for the government of Guam to retain their ability to collect on prior due real property taxes and extend the deadline for the, to extend the deadline for real property tax RPT exemptions, as well as to authorize the use of the taxpayer identification number. I do, however, Madam Speaker, I would like to make a couple amendments on the bill as further substituted on the floor. So, Madam Speaker, the amendments I'd like to proffer are on line seven.
What page?
Page one, line seven. And it's a simple change of dates from the current dates of December 31, 2014, through and changing that date, December 31 to January 23, and changing the year from 2014 to 2015. And then again, on line eight, changing the date from December 31, 2014 to January 23, 2015.
I'm sorry, Senator. So your motion, the amendment you're proffering is on page one, line seven, to change the date from January 31, 2014 to January 23, 2015.
Changing it from December 31, 2014 to January 23, 2015.
Oh, wait, let's do one first, this, on the line seven.
Yes, line seven.
That's the first one. January 23, right?
January 23, 2015.
Twenty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Okay, and then, well, this might affect the others. So what are the other dates that I'm sorry again?
The second amendment is also on line eight with the same.
On line eight?
Yeah.
Which is going to be what?
Also changing December 31, 2014.
So that will be December 31, 2014, and on or before?
January 23.
January 23, 2015.
2015.
Okay. So on the amendment for line seven and eight, changing the dates, I have the Vice Speaker. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
I have no opposition to the date change, Madam Speaker. I'm just a little concerned about whether or not we've received any assurances from Rev and Tax. Because when we had the hearings last summer, they insisted, and on sworn testimony, said they were going to be done by August, the end of August, and that the Board of Equalization would be able to review everything in October, and they would be able to publish, or at least issue, the tax statements in November. So I'm just trying to figure, we're only giving them a month. I've not received any word as to the status of the reassessment or the reappraisal, so will, is this going to be enough time? That's my only question. I imagine either the sponsor or the oversight chair can yield to just assure me that this is not the same story that I was getting, that August was, I promised, I promised, August, and it's now the end of December, and that additional four months was not sufficient. Would four weeks be sufficient?
So Senator Limtiake, would you be able to answer the Vice Speaker's question?
I think I can, Madam Speaker. During the public hearing on Bill 413, the Director of Rev and Tax was present and had requested that those dates be changed to such. So it would appear that he was confident in those date changes, that they would be able to do so. And thus, that's why the amendment to the date changes.
Mr. Vice Speaker, you still have the floor and the amendment?
If they have that assurance, I know the good oversight chair was going to tie his salary to it at one point, but we weren't able to do that. But if they say January 23, I will support it, because we need to move the date up anyway. But I just wanted to make sure that this was not going to be another August date that was promised to us.
Does anybody else would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Siniklis?
Just echoing the concerns of the Vice Speaker, Madam Speaker, you know, the pushing back of this deadline is necessary for us to be able to get everybody who's applying for these exemptions to have their applications processed legally, because technically, the application deadline expired back in March. Whether we extend it to January 23, even if the revaluation isn't completed by then, let's say it gets completed in June, the bigger impact will be on revenue to the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund, for example. But it won't necessarily have an impact on the people filing for exemptions, because whether we push it back to June or push it back to January, what's important is that our people fully understand when that deadline is to file for those exemptions. So if we are going to go to January 23, we can. Whether or not Rev and Tax will be done with the revaluation by January 23, I don't know. But if we do make January 23 be the cutoff date for people to file for their exemptions, we need to make sure that's very effectively communicated to the community between now and then. So in the interest of moving the issue forward, we could make it the 23rd. There's nothing stopping the 33rd Guam Legislature from further extending it if that becomes necessary. But, you know, the Vice Speaker is correct with respect to timelines. I mean, not only did we have this issue with the revaluation, but we had the same issue with online services up at the department, where we were told April, then we were told July, and then finally, we were told this January. And will I stake my career on them meeting January 23? I would not. Nor would I stake my career on them meeting January 1. But with respect to moving the issue forward and setting a clear deadline for our people to be able to turn in their exemption paperwork, I think January 23 is as good a guesstimate as any at this point.
Thank you, Senator. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? So there's been no objections, so therefore, the amendment is passed. Senator, you may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, once again, this is the second iteration of the bill. A lot of the discussion was had on the floor when it was first heard. And I just want to thank all of the colleagues for participating in discussion. I look forward to hearing the further discussion on the bill, and I'll give our colleagues the opportunity to speak on the bill as they see. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Siniklis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, just to clarify, we are now talking about the bill that was substituted on the floor. I did have an objection, but you didn't recognize me.
I'm so sorry.
To the substituted version, because now this completely changes the entire dynamic of the discussion of the bill. But my committee did make a bunch of changes to this bill, and that was what was brought to this floor before it was substituted. And the changes, if you refer to the committee version, are on page two. That's the first major change, and I guess I'll go through these various changes piecemeal. The first change was on page two, and if you open up the committee version and the actual version that we're discussing here, you can see a dramatic difference in the page two version. the page-two version, where we had a whole bunch of double underlined items that were added here to the page-two. And the reason why this language was added here was, on page-two subsection 24-109, failure to supply identifying number, we require that the taxpayer and the property owner provide their taxpayer identification number to be tagged with their property. And the bill, now that we're entertaining, doesn't include the additional language that I had here on the committee version. And that additional language I put here in the committee version was basically to ensure that just because we're tagging taxpayer identification numbers to properties, that those properties and particularly those property taxes no longer become sealed within the protection of the IRS Mirror Code. Because right now, you cannot get IRS information audited by the public auditor, for example. And so, if we tag taxpayer identification numbers of properties, technically, the Department of Revenue and Taxation can turn around and say, "Oh, now that it's tagged with TINs, taxpayer identification numbers, we can't show you what the property tax numbers are." I mean, that may even influence the public law that we have that requires us to publish the property tax delinquency listings, because the reality is now they're going to be tagged with the taxpayer identification numbers. So unless we're going to go back to that law now and change the law to make it clear that you don't publish those things—I mean, the language that the committee put in basically said that taxpayer identification numbers must be redacted, and there's not—and—and this clause does not prohibit the public auditor from being able to go in and look at those numbers, just because they're—they're—they're tagged now of taxpayer identification numbers. Um, the—the intent of this bill and the intent of tagging taxpayer identification numbers to real property owners is so that we can have proper offsets available within the agency. So, let's say I owe—I owe property taxes, and I'm getting a tax refund. Without the tagging of taxpayer identification numbers, we're unable to offset the refund with the delinquent property tax. By tagging it now, they will be able to offset that, but then the question becomes, if we tag it, does that information now no longer become available for our auditor or even this body to be able to review, because now it's connected to taxpayer information that's sealed by the—or confidential under the federal IRS Mirror Code? So, this entire section here, unless someone wants to come up with a different way to write it, was put into the bill that was as amended by the committee in order to—to ensure that that tagging of the taxpayer identification numbers doesn't create an undue hindrance on the government's ability to review those—those records. So, um, I guess, now that we've substituted on the floor this bill, I need to now, as the committee chair, make an amendment to put it back in. So, my amendment will be to take the language from the committee version and put it into the—on the floor substituted version. And that will be the committee version, page two, lines 13, into page three, line two, and that will be placed on the floor version now, on page two, after line 15. My first amendment, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so, on—the amendment then, which is the language that, rather than to have it retyped and pass them out, is to look at the committee report, um, page two, lines 13 to 25, page three, lines one and two. So, on the amendment, Senator Limtiako?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, um, no objection to the amendment in its intent, however, on—on line 24 of the version that was amended by the committee and further substituted, there is a reference to the word "him." I—I would recommend that—that be clarified and either struck out, or—I'm not sure if they're referring to the public auditor or to the committee—chairman of the committee, but we could clar—just clarify and clean up that language. I have no further objections to the—to the amendment.
So, it could be that the department shall furnish—
Any.
—any property, any.
Yeah.
Okay, so—so to delete then the words "him," "with"—
Correct.
—on that line 24 in that amendment without any objections, so ordered. So, since there's no objections to the amendment, so ordered. Senator, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The next section here is where the metal meets the meat, so to speak, or the rubber hits the road, whatever—whatever you want to get, however you want to describe it. But in the original version of this bill that I introduced, that was vetoed by the governor, we addressed the question of property taxes that were older than 10 years old on the rolls. And I spoke of this at length, and I'm going to try and do as good a job this time, because it just gets—it gets hard having to reiterate the same issue. Right now, our property tax statute of limitations is 30 years, which means that the government can go back 20, 25 years and ask you to produce a receipt to prove that you paid your property taxes 25 years ago, and if you didn't, or you can't produce that receipt, then the government will be able to say, "Well, you owe it," even though you might have already paid it. Every other tax that we have here on this island, from federal income taxes, federal corporate taxes, federal withholding taxes, our gross receipts taxes, every single tax on this island has a 10-year statute of limitations. You can only go back 10 years. But for—for real property, we have a 30-year statute of limitations. Now, um, there were a number of amendments that the committee included in the version we reported out to seek to reduce that statute of limitations from 30 years to 10 years, not just prospectively, but for—but—but for current taxpayers as well. And the reason why is because the—the 10-year statute of limitations for property taxes would not—would not only be uniform throughout all of our other taxes here on this island, but it'll also be in line with what's going on in—in the nation. The state of California has a 10-year statute of limitations on property taxes. And the reason why we have these statutes of limitations, Madam Speaker, is to protect the people of Guam, to protect them from the government having to require them to provide proof of something that they might not be able to retain for over 10 years. You know, the reason why the statute of limitations is 10 years at the federal level is because that's considered a reasonable amount of time to be able to have a taxpayer have to go back and prove certain items. Now, even the IRS doesn't go back more than three years, except for certain cases, but even after three years, going all the way back to 10 years, nothing really goes beyond 10 years unless it's fraud. So, fraud basically can be—can be pursued throughout all tax levels, because there is nothing that prevents fraud from being prosecuted. But for us to be having a 30-year statute of limitations on our property taxes is incredibly unwieldy for our people. Um, and the ones who suffer the most from this 30-year statute of limitations are our senior citizens, our monamco, because they're the ones who'll be property owners for such a long period of time, going into—you know, going back 30 years. Most—most people probably buy their first piece of property at the age of 25, at the age of 30, and if you go back 25 years from there, you're already getting into the senior citizen level. And so, for us to—to have this statute of limitations go all the way back for 30 years just for property, when everything else—business taxes, income taxes, everything else, just 10, uh, what kind of—what kind of message are we communicating to our people? You know? And so, the version that the committee reported out was trying to strike a compromise, because the original bill that I introduced lowered that statute from 30 years down to 10 years, and the governor vetoed it. I want the governor to be able to sign this into law, and I want to protect our people. And so, the version that we reported out from the committee was going to require the public auditor to go in and audit the records that are older than 10 years. And if those records came back and there were any findings that showed that the Department of Revenue and Taxation's documents were not up to par, then we would wipe out those records from 10 years going all the way back to 30. Because if the department's records are not airtight, we shouldn't be required—we shouldn't be unfairly burdened—
Just as a point of order, I—can we just—I would support going to the 10 years, if we could just stay first on the 10 years, and then the—the effect of the enactment, separate that? Because I—I will support the—the reducing it from 30 to 10, just simply. But when we get to the next section on enactment, I have some grave questions. So, if we can just have one amendment on 10—30 to 10, and then we'll—we'll discuss the effect of enactment—the effect of this enactment provision. If we could, please.
Uh, I—I know he did—he did mention, Mr. Vice Speaker, about the—the timeframe from the 30 to—to 10, but I know in his discussion—but he's not making that—
Madam Speaker, the—the original bill lowered it from 30 to 10, and the governor vetoed it.
You're right, and that's—and that's what you're discussing, minus what I'm trying to do.
I'm trying to find a way for us to get this thing addressed that's not going to get vetoed.
You're right. Without having to go to the next amendment, I—I think he's focusing on the 10 and 30 years, and—and you—you may continue then.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I've got to try and figure out where I—
Sorry. I know that's the only thing I don't like about point of—
So—
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Yes.
Would it—would it help if he moves the amendment, then speaks on the amendment?
Well, but—
It seems to me we're all over the place, because I—
No, no, I mean, everyone's style, of course, is different, and sometimes we discuss it first, and then we make the amendment.
So, some—some styles make it more expedient, where we could follow the discussion easier, and that's my suggestion.
Madam Speaker—
Yes, I—go ahead, I'm allowing you to just get your thoughts together and continue with your discussion.
Point of per—personal privilege, Madam Speaker, this is the second time this session that I'm getting sidebar comments from my colleagues that are—are derogatory—
Senator, some—
And I would appreciate it if I could be afforded at least the same respect that I afford everybody else on this floor.
I understand, and you're right, and I've always, you know, said this, that whenever you're speaking as well, even though there's a question, you always address it to the chair. You don't turn around and address it to whomever's asking the question, and that we'd like our colleagues to remain focused on their discussion, so I would appreciate it as well, that there are, you know, no sidebars or any kind of discussions happening in the session hall. If you have any, to please take it outside, and I'd like everyone to give their attention to whomever it is that's speaking at the moment.
And also, Madam Speaker, just to further extend my point of personal privilege, I wouldn't be having to do this at length—at length, and this is—this is—this is complicated for me too, and I wouldn't have to be doing this if my objection to the—to the—to substitute—the floor version was just adhered to, then the—the burden would be on the person who would want to take those items out. The committee reported this version out. I'll continue, Madam Speaker. So, we have this 30-year statute of limitations. We weren't able to reduce it down to 10, because the governor vetoed it, and that's an area that he's probably not going to be willing to compromise on. So what I was trying to propose in the substitute version of this bill that I'm going to proffer as an amendment to this version that we're discussing on the floor, is a compromise where we have the public auditor go in and evaluate these records and determine whether or not, out of all these records that have—that are older than 10 years in the department, are they properly kept? Do they have all the necessary supporting documents to be able to prove that whatever it is they go out and bill people for are in fact true and correct? And the reason why this is important, Madam Speaker, is because when you look at those records, when you actually take the time to look at those records, the number of individuals and businesses that have property taxes in arrears older than 10 years on the books up at Rev and Tax has over 6,827 taxpayers. And if you break it down by amounts owed, the first 100 taxpayers owe one penny. They're on the books up at Rev and Tax owing one penny. Now, I'll tell you from an accounting point of view, that whenever you have a book entry of one penny, it's because you're trying to keep it on the books, but you're probably unable to reconcile it. You won't have 100 taxpayers owing one penny in property taxes. That's an accounting entry, because you're unable to reconcile, and that's already very The first 240 entries owe five cents or less. The first 399 entries owe 10 cents or less. The first 600 entries owe $1 or less. We're going to be seizing people's properties, because the—the books show that they owe $1. The first 1,382 entries owe $10 or less, according to these files. The first 3,151 of them, out of 6,000, almost 50% owe $100 or less, 10 years and older. And the vast majority, almost 80% of it, 5,687 entries owe $1,000 or less, 10 years and older. Now, if the—the department go out and ask these individuals or these businesses, "Where's your receipt for this one penny, Mr. and Mrs. so-and-so?" "You owe one penny from 20 years ago, where's your receipt?" And if they don't have one, what are they going to do? They're going to require them to pay their one penny? Imagine how many government hours we're going to waste? Imagine how many man-hours and how many government resources we're going to waste, having to go around and address all these individual items? And that's why we have a statute of limitations, Madam Speaker, because not only does it protect the people against an unruly government going after them for something they might not be able to prove or provide, but it also provides for a common sense use of resources. Old records are unable to be proven or reconciled, and they get even—even harder as time goes by. Now, what if the Department of Revenue and Taxation follows the law, and they mail a notice to so-and-so who owes property taxes from 20 years ago, and they don't have the same mailing address? And they mail it to them three times, and they don't have the same mailing address? Then they take that property that they owe one penny on, and they go and they proceed to sell that property, because they followed the requirements of the law, they sent out the notices, nobody responded. So now, somebody who owes one penny on their property is all of a sudden having their property sold, because the government is going through all the necessary motions in order to get that done. I'm not making this up, Madam Speaker. Now, the reason why in the original legislation, we wanted to reduce it to 10 years is to protect against that. But in the interest of compromise, trying to move this issue forwards, that we can reconcile all these questions and come to a conclusion that's not only going to protect our people, but something the governor's going to be comfortable signing, the committee reported out a version that said, "Madam Auditor, can you please go and audit these records? All of these records that are 10 years and older, go in and audit them, you have 180 days to go in there and do your audit. And when you're done with your audit, please report back the findings to us. And from there, we will take action based on what it is that you report to this body." Now, if her audit—if she goes in there and everyone's satisfied with her study, and she says, "You know what? These records are in fact well-maintained, and I don't—I don't believe that the—that the—the department is going to be conducting its business in a manner that is not verifiable by facts," then everybody can be comfortable, including all the property owners. But if the auditor comes back and says that the records that are 10 years and older have so many issues, and these are the issues, and we've seen her audit reports, they're very well-done, they do a very, very good job there, at least as policymakers, we will truly understand whether or not those records are something that we can rely on, and if we can't rely on them, then why are we going to allow the department to be able to go out and assess taxes that might have already been paid, or go through the motions that may lead to property seizures, if we don't already have the documents necessary for us to be able to validate those things? So, Madam Speaker, I mean, I'm—I'm—I'm a little taken aback by—by the idea that, you know, I need to do this one way or the other, but I wanted to encapsulate the entire question and why the committee did what it did, because this is no small matter when you're talking about 6,827 taxpayers and their properties. Property—is no small matter. And it not only goes and speaks to the question of, "Are we overbilling? Are we underbilling? Are we having property seized?" But it ultimately goes to the question of, "Are we truly enforcing our laws in a way that we can—we can—with competence say to our people, 'We're doing the right thing here. We're doing the right thing here.'" I can't. Not when I see accounting entries like this, and not when every other—not when California does it differently. And what's even more alarming is, in the bill, even the one for the floor, it's prospective. They reduce the statute of limitations prospectively. I think that's all—that's in the bill. I'll double-check. But if it's good to do prospectively, then why is it not—then why is it a bad thing to do for our people going back? And I would encourage everybody—and I can provide copies to everybody—of all of the names on this list, all kinds of people from various walks of life. It's pretty amazing. Some incredibly wealthy individuals in this community, and every—every Joe and Flo out there, businesses, churches, all right? I'm even surprised to see a church on this list. So, Madam Speaker, now that the bill has been substituted on the floor, I'll need to recreate the various changes that we put into this—into the version that I reported out of my committee into an actual separate amendment for the body to— committee into an actual, separate amendment for the body to consider. And I would need some time to do that, because we did do it on the original language, and now I need to go back to what's been substituted on the floor, make sure that it's par for the course, and it's exactly transferable. So I will need some time to draft this amendment, but I just wanted to make my statement very clear that this is the amendment that we're going to be proffering, Madam Speaker. At this time, I'd like to request for a recess, that I can construct this amendment and propose it to the body to be included into the bill.
You're not dealing with the First Amendment that you spoke about, which is the removal of the dates? The legislature's back in session. Mr. Vice Speaker, I just want to make sure that we put it on the floor, that we're going to, the senator's going to take some time to come up with the amendments, so it will be to, there's no objections, so set aside four thirteen. No objections, so... Four thirteen, yeah, that's what I said, four thirteen. So we're going to four eighteen, and the vice speaker, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move the Bill four eighteen thirty-two, C O R S, substituted by the Committee on General Government Law Operations and Cultural Affairs, be placed in second reading file, and I ask for an opportunity to speak.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to commend the Post Commission for the work that it did. It has been working on this proposal that they submitted to General Government Law Operations Committee for three years. When they came to testify, I've been here several terms, and it was the first time that I saw, I think it was seven directors, sit at the table, and all, one by one, state that they were in full support of this piece of legislation that they've been working on. This is an act to adopt the rules and regulations of the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission concerning certification of peace officers' standards, and for employing agencies and training institutions to be codified under Chapter Three of Title Twenty-Seven Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations that are also attached. The director, Guam Community College hired Mrs. Sanchez de Moss to be the executive director of this, but the commission was composed of the chief of police, the chief of the fire, chief of customs and quarantine, and the director of customs and quarantine, the director of the Department of Corrections, the director of, the chief of the airport police, every agency that had peace officers were involved in the writing of this, and they all agree that the standards that they've set forth in this are standards that they would and should be implemented. They've given time within which to, for the effective date to go into effect, they've given additional time for people who are not in compliance to also have an opportunity to be able to get themselves into compliance with the standards that are being posed in this, and they've asked that this legislature approve their proposed regulations. There are only two amendments that the committee made, which is why it's as substituted. The First Amendment, Madam Speaker, was the result of the fact that, when this bill went out, the mayor's council had an opportunity to review it, and Mayor Goglu came, and on behalf of the mayor's council, asked that the mayor's council be provided training, and that they be listed in category three. So we've added that in. The Second Amendment that the committee made in the substitute version was brought forth by our colleague from Timouning, who very rightfully noticed that we were dealing with the physical aspects, all the training aspects, but the one thing that was glaringly missing was assuring that these people who were going to be physically fit, understood how to write reports, how to do all the things that they're learning at the academies, that they weren't getting the training to be able to properly deal with individuals within our community who are suffering from disabilities or other challenges. And so I want to thank Senator Yamashita for proffering the amendment that was also included, I believe it's on page three of the bill. I'm sorry, it's on page two. And all required standards of performance to include competencies required to appropriately interact with people with disabilities and people with mental health challenges. That was suggested by Senator Yamashita at the hearing. It was agreed to unanimously by all the members of the Post Commission, they wholeheartedly endorsed its inclusion, and so the committee included it and included the mayor's on page... Four of the rules and regulations attached there, too. I'm not going to belabor the point, it was worked on for three years, these are the standards, and this is what all of the directors felt that their men and women in their departments can and should meet, and there was no opposition to it, and so I ask that this legislature support the work that has been done by these individuals, by this commission, and approve this. Madam Speaker, I know that usually we just let a lot of these rules and regulations lapse into law. Unfortunately, this was received by the legislature on October the twenty-third. Under our standing rules, we could, if it had gotten here in June, just let ninety days lapse, and the regulations, I mean, the proposed regulations would have lapsed and been deemed approved. Unfortunately, under our rules, if the legislature is within ninety days of, I mean, if we would adjourn sin to die, these rules and regulations would also die with the thirty-second Guam Legislature. So the committee had to take an affirmative act to present this to the body and ask for its approval, rather than just allow it to lapse and be deemed approved if we took no action. And so I'm asking that we take the affirmative action of approving these rules as submitted with the two amendments, adding the mayor's in category three in the regs, and also assuring that our men and women that are involved in public safety throughout our community are adequately trained to be able to interact with individuals with disabilities or mental health challenges. So I thank all the senators that came to the hearing that day, and I'm hoping for unanimous support from this body. Thank you.
Senator Yamashita, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you gave me the honor of saying the opening prayer for this final session, well, I think it's going to be the final session this term, and the theme of the prayer was about peace. And I so meant it when I said, "Every single one of us in here, peace starts with us and our policies and our practices, our priorities that the body determines." And this work that is presented by our vice speaker really is so necessary and so needed to define the performance standards that shall be addressed, that shall be met by all of our peace officers. Those men and women out there who toe the line, who ensure that everybody's safe, that the public is working together in harmony, are dedicated people who want to do what's right, and this type of legislation, this type of proposed legislation lets them know that. I, too, was very appreciative of the fact that you had all of the directors at a table during the public hearing, and I know that they had been meeting for three years, and we were finally at the point where they offered this to us as their rules and regs. I thank the author of this legislation for incorporating the amendments that I had talked to him about. It showed me that there really is serious attention to where we are today as an island, Madam Speaker, and that is, we are at a place where every single person on our island makes a difference, and every single person on our island can make a horrible difference. We all can make a good difference, and we can all make a horrible difference. And for people to know how to best work with us who have disabilities, you need that training component. So I thank vice speaker for saying that anybody who wants to become a peace officer needs to know about those of us with disabilities and how to best work with us. Those are huge starting points. And during that public hearing, I said that there's only ten percent of us on our island, in any general population, who have disabilities or mental health challenges, but it's going to be those of us from that ten percent that's going to create disharmony or disarray when we are not appropriately supported or prepared to be a part of our society. Madam Speaker, we all remember in two thousand and seven, when a gentleman who had ADHD was shot at the veteran cemetery, and, you know, he was in a car, and he was honking the horn, and his behavior was bizarre, and the peace officers did what they believed was right, and they shot and killed him. In two thousand and eight, Madam Speaker, we had a twenty-seven-year-old, he had a mother on the street saying he needs his meds. Again, this young man was shot and killed, and, you know, I talked to the police officers, and they believed that was what needed to be done. And often, often, it's always, families are the answer to these unfortunate situations, and, but you had a mom saying, "He needs his meds." I don't disagree that families are a real big part of the solution to whatever's in front of us, but it really does, Madam Speaker, take a community to help some of us out. Gone are the days when we lock up those of us with disabilities and you keep us in separate classrooms. Those days, Madam Speaker, are gone. But what needs to happen now is all teachers need to be prepared to work with us, and all peace officers know, need to know how to best deal with us. And of course, prevention is always the key, but sometimes intervention is needed. We all remember, it was two years ago in Tumon, where one of us lost it and killed three, I think it was three, visitors. And what struck me about that, and of course, he's paying the consequences, as he should, what struck me about that was people saw signs, but didn't know how to deal with it. His mother would say that he would be afraid of the rain, or talk to the rain, but she didn't know how to deal with it. And we just need, in our community, to do a better job at helping us mothers and us fathers, us godparents, know how to help, so that we can avert, stop those most unfortunate, tragic situations. He's in jail, he wasn't killed, but he's in jail, I believe, what, four concurrent life sentences? But he has a mother out here who's now in the hospital, in and out, because she just is trying to deal with what happened and how. And I always will remember that this legislature stood and prayed for that family, who is paying the consequences. The police force had passed General Orders twelve dash zero-three, and I'm very glad that they did, two years ago, when we repeatedly started talking about, "How do you deal with those who look different, who sound different, who act different, sometimes may even smell different?" And those general orders said that this is what police officers need to know and be able to do when one of us acts out. And then LEND, which is a graduate program in the University of Guam, Cedars, in partnership with University of Hawaii, those graduate students did a study on the knowledge of General Orders twelve dash zero-three, Madam Speaker, and what they found out was the candidates were aware of General Orders twelve dash zero-three, but they didn't know what it meant. They didn't know what they would do if a mother of a schizophrenic called, "Come help me." They wouldn't know what to do if I called and said, "I need help with my son Eric, because he's going through a huge spiral right now." And they wouldn't know that the last thing you want to do is to jump on them. That is the last thing you want to do with a person of autism, because that backfires. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done with activating the regulations and the performance standards. I am most grateful that Colonel Santa Tomas, as executive manager for Post, facilitated the conversations and for... the conversations and for three years kept it going. What does GCC need to offer so that every person who graduates from the academy knows how to work with all of us on this island? Not just the peaceful ones, not just the ones who get in trouble once in a while, but those of us who really need to be worked with in different ways. There's lots of work that needs to be done. I suggest that behavioral wellness really needs to step up to the plate, needs to be very proactive in how to work with us. I suggest that the University of Guam, in the preparation of its teachers, needs to insist that every teacher knows how to work with all of us. I suggest that the University of Guam, in its School of Education Teacher Prep Program, needs to ensure that every teacher knows how to work with us families, whom are the most difficult to work with. It is no doubt that when they know it's me on the phone, more often than not, they're in a meeting, because it gets very tiring talking about my issues. There's a lot of work, there's a lot of concern, but this is a very good step. And the training needs to be continuous, the performance evaluation needs to be sincere, and this performance needs to be tied to their paychecks. It just does. You don't get trained in this, you don't know how to work in this, then you need to get further training. After a certain amount of time, you still don't have it, then you get paid docked. Because for many people, the paycheck seems to do the talking. Madam Speaker, this is a great, great bill. And I'm very thankful that it is on the session agenda, and I'm very thankful that it's going to be one of the last measures that I support: peace. Let there be peace on earth. Let there be peace on Guam, and let it begin with us. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If the author, you, I just have one question, and I understand this was a lot of work that's been done by, by this, these agencies and Mr. Santos. However, I just wanted to know, I know there's a beginning to everything, and, you know, the vice speaker once mentioned that the Office of Technology Legislation was one of the most significant pieces of legislation this term. But I, I would have to say that this is, this is, to me, one of the most significant pieces of legislation that I've seen this past term, as it addresses one of the critical priorities of our government or island, public safety. But this question I have here, because you're implementing this, is this, is there a reason that there's a three-years phase in? My understanding, when this goes into effect, that by 2016, by 2016, there'll be mandatory testing? By 2016, the first mandatory testing will begin?
Mr. Vice Speaker, do you yield to the question?
Yes, there is. And there's going to be all kinds of different testing, including physical testing, but they're being given time. They're, they're being told now that in three years, we will start testing you, and there will be testing that's age-appropriate. For someone my age, it's going to be different from someone as fit as the good senator from Umati. And so the, the police officers who are there, that are closer to my age, will, won't have to do as many push-ups or be expected to run as fast as his age group. But there will, there are different age-appropriate testing that the Post Commission took from the Air Force. But if he or I were to fail, we would still have an additional two years within which to try to get ourselves into condition. And if someone can't get themselves together in five years, there's some major problems. And I know there was concern about the, about the physical testing in this, in this, in this, in the proposed regs. When I was in high school, you couldn't tell if I was standing up or lying down. I was about the same size both ways. And so I grew up as a fat kid that had to wear a T-shirt into the water, because otherwise you would have thought I had floaties on in front of me. I'm very conscious about that, so now I'm always working on it. So at age 63, if I can do what is necessary to try to keep my diet in place and work out those officers who are expected to be able to run to assist in the defense of someone. So I remember when I was a judge, and I pressed my panic button, I was across the street, and it was a female marshal in heels that got to me before any of my men did. I'm glad that the judiciary came and said they were in favor of this. But we're giving everybody sufficient time to phase this in, have everybody understand that there's the physical parts of this, the course training that's going to be necessary, all of those are going to have to be phased in. It's not that it's going to be next year, if you don't have it, you're out. It's three years from now, you're going to need to have, address the educational part, you're going to need to have all the training parts, including being able to address and be able to understand how to interact with individuals with disabilities. And if you haven't done it, then they'll give you some additional time to do that. But we, the Post Commission and all the directors that were involved, try to be as sensitive to the fact that they have men and women that are going to need some additional time, and they purposely put all the additional time provisions in here. I mean, I know that some of them wanted to have it sooner, but I think the compromise was three years hence, and an additional, you actually have every three months after that to be tested, every quarter, yeah, every quarter. So, but you have two more years of quarters, and they're like saying, I mean, that, that's plenty of time to, to finish all the coursework that you need to do and any of the physical testing that you need to comply with.
Senator, was there potential questions?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, the vice speaker very much cleared that up. I, I just wanted to put that out there, because there is certainly timelines for this. And I'm, I think I'm already seeing the results before this even goes into effect, as we see some of our law enforcements are already taking initiative before this even goes into effect to start preparing yourself. So I do thank the vice speaker for his kind words after gaining 20 pounds. And maybe, maybe it's the angle from earlier, but, but I thank him for his kind words. I certainly would like to be in his shape at 63. But Madam Speaker, I also want to say that this also will bring some continuity after these folks go through the, the basic training, the training to get them physically sound before they enter into the workforce, because we, we all seen it. I mean, that's why we also see in the military as well, and I see it here, that this is equivalent to the US Air Force Fitness Test. So, you know, we've seen that there is, there is periodic tests throughout, and we see how this was developed in line with that, and, and seeing that it brings continuity to our officers out there, our peace officers out there, so that they, you know, at least have some standard. I also want to note, there were some folks in the Fire and Police Department that are good friends of mine, that, you know, that really appreciate this, and at least they have some guide, although they were already trying to keep themselves in good health for the job and the demand it calls for. But they appreciate that they have some standard to work with, and, and that's good to hear, that they're already talking about this. So I thank the, the author, I thank the vice speaker for moving this significant piece of legislation out there for our peace officers to have some guide and to keep them healthy with their, in their jobs. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? There being none. Mr. Vice Speaker, would you like to close?
Yes, Madam Speaker. If, if I may, I didn't speak to them, but if I could add two co-sponsors, I know the Senator Yamashita was very interested and had considerable time. So I'd like to ask that she be a second co-sponsor. And Senator Tina was very appreciative of the fact that we included the mayors, and so she'd asked also if she could be a co-sponsor, and I'd like to add both of them as co-sponsors.
So on that motion, objection, so ordered. Thank you. So on the motion then to send 418-32, the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. 420, somebody missed the cover. Mr. Vice Speaker?
Hi.
Oh, you want to wait until, okay, we'll wait. Yeah, well, okay, so let me do mine then. Mine will take five minutes. Okay.
Madam Speaker, you're recognized on 420.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place on the third reading file, Bill Number 420-32, as substituted by the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women's Affairs.
Any objection? Seeing none.
Thank you very much again. I'd like to just give you a chronology of some of the things that have happened, or has happened with Bill 420. On August 7, 2014, the Guam Educators Certification Commission conducted a public hearing pursuant to the Administrative Adjudication Act for the proposed rules and regulations governing the standards of the professional conduct for Guam educators. The proposed standards were then transmitted to the Attorney General's Office, the Department of Administration, and the compilers of law, and favorable responses were received by all three. It was passed and adopted unanimously by the Commission on October 14, 2014. And currently, the Commission has the authority to maintain standards for the issuance of a certificate. However, there is no mechanism that allows the Commission to discipline certified teachers who are allegedly guilty of misconduct. Individuals simply resign from their employer, from their employer, before any adverse action is taken. Consequently, they can move off island or move to other schools and teach in another jurisdiction or another school with their valid Guam educator certificate. This bill sets the system for regulating the teaching profession in relation to educator misconduct. The rules and regulations define the standards of professional conduct expected for all certified educators, and what steps will be taken by the Commission against educators who are found guilty of misconduct. This would allow GCEC to either sanction, reprimand, suspend, and even revoke an educator's certificate who are found guilty of misconduct. On November 24th, the Committee on Education held a public hearing. There are safeguards from frivolous accusations such as signed affidavits, investigations by the AG's officers and hearing officers not connected with hiring organizations. My staff met with the certification office to review the concerns with the union. The union representative, Mr. Dan Dale-Priora, met with my staff to go over amendments that were recommended. Amendments were made. In a GFT newsletter dated December 12, GFT stated the following: "GFT met with the staff of Speaker One Thet's office to discuss changes made to Bill 420 regarding educator professional conduct. There have been changes made during the recommendations presented by GFT," said President Tim Fidenko. "One of the changes is to remove the phrase throughout, is that the but not limited to, which eliminates any problems that it can occur with such broad language initially included, included in the bill. GCEC is responsible for issuing the educator certificates to qualified Guam teachers, guidance counselors, librarians, and administrators. The Commission must also have the authority to discipline and even penalize those individuals who misbehave and commit acts that are unprofessional and even illegal." And if you look at the bill itself, it would, it actually compiled all mandatory bills, those that fall under a penal code, and there are in page three where it says mandatory revocation. And it lists, and it just took everything and kind of put it under one, under one rules and regs, and, and areas such as criminal homicide, criminal sexual conduct, aggravated assault, kidnapping, solicitation of children, and child pornography, incest, indecent exposure, stalking, child abuse, robbery, burglary, falsifying official records, forgery, theft, fraud, and a finding of insanity by federal or any local court. So throughout then the bill, you would see that then it takes, of course, this whole code, putting it under one. The one concern they also had is that they wanted to make sure that all these are well documented. That was a major concern of theirs, and then that was actually provided for in, in the bill. What I think is important for, for everyone to, and then when you go through the bill, by the way, you would see then that it talks very specific to things such as sexual abuse or exploitation, what that means, on the job, sexual misconduct, which is against our, what the law says, with a child or a student regardless of the age. And, let me see, what else do we have here? In the not, not limited, but not limited, they want it to be very specific to the activities, but not to make it so broad. So you would see that also throughout the bill in which those changes were made as requested by the unions. So the important thing to remember, and very similar to the legislature as well, is that when anyone is going to file any kind of a complaint, and the legislature had its first experience one time to deal with the issue of moral turpitude. And in, and as a result of that, and then further investigations, the legislature also created, or will, can create as needed, an ethics committee. And it, and no one can just come and file a frivolous report, because then they must sign that report, that accusation that, you know, they're making of an alleged wrongdoing. Similarly, that you would see as well in this, in this bill, is to assure that it's just not, not just anybody can actually make these type of accusations, but it must be substantiated, signed, notarized. You're going to get individuals outside of the school system, such as individuals, officers from the Attorney General's Office, who would do then the investigation and make recommendations to the Commission. So since the Commission issues can, and, and does issue these certificates, then they, by the same token, based on the requirements, based on law, that they can also suspend, reprimand, or revoke. And there's also the process in which it can be appealed. I know the only one thing we were not, none others, well, but the one thing that they wanted was not to have the, the Commission move forward until such time that if, even if they're considered guilty already, but if they're going to go through the process of appealing, they wanted to just say, "Don't revoke, just keep it going all the way until such time that the appeal was settled," and that, you know, was just going to drag it too long, weren't able to resolve that. So it remained that after the conviction, then the suspension can take place. So I ask my colleagues for favorable consideration of Bill 420. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita. Any other senator wish to be heard on the, on this bill? Any other senator who wish to be heard on the, on this bill? I see Senator Adet and Senator Snickless.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me to speak on this measure. This, this is another policy statement that is really very much needed. As Madam Speaker stated, the Guam Educator Commission is what reviews and issues certificates of license to have people come and work with our children, all of them, all of our children, early childhood, elementary, middle, and high. It says that you are qualified. It says that that license says you're qualified, you're trained, that you deserve to grow the minds of our future. And so when a teacher finds themselves in trouble with the law and does something wrong, then the Commission should have that same type of authority to say, you are no longer qualified to work with our children. You are no longer the right person to grow the minds of what's going to be best for our island of Guam. And so this is very essential, very important. If you read the committee report, Mr. Speaker, you'll see from the chair, the acting chair of the Guam Educator Commission, Dr. Gail Hendricks, she, she paints a story of how when she listens, she's been on conferences, that talks about certification, rules and regs, the authorities, the responsibilities, of how the stories of teachers who have violated children and suffer consequences of law, but yet keep their certificates, and then may leave that particular jurisdiction and be hired by another school system. That happens on Guam, too. A particular principal may know of something that a teacher did was wrong, and reprimand, file, and then goes to another school. And so we can do a better job at collaborating, and the Certification Commission will help us have a better handle on who is doing what and who shouldn't be allowed to do what. These rules and regs, Mr. Speaker, were vetted by teachers themselves, the Commission, our representative teachers, counselors, community members, management, who worked to research and then went out to the different villages and had public hearings. This is a good lesson in paying attention to what your profession is touting. I know in the public hearing, teachers are saying, well, they didn't know about it. They hadn't heard about it. And one more time, it's pay attention to what's going on in your professional world. I stand in full support of this. I think it's, it's very important. And so I thank Madam Speaker for moving it forward, and I stand in full support of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator, Senator Snickless, Senator Melintiaco, then Senator Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I just, I have some concerns. My first concern is how, you know, right now we have a system for due process. And in this system for due process, it's pretty much written out into law, how an educator can go about being disciplined and, and all the way up to their rights under civil service. And the biggest concern I have with this bill is, are we creating a second due process system wherein one deals with the employment of the employee in civil service, and the other deals with the certification of the employee under the Certification Office? And the reason why this concerns me is because if we have two different due process systems that both affect whether or not an individual can work in this community or work for our government as an educator, what happens when there's a conflict between the findings of fact in one due process system or the other? What happens if, you know, you go to civil service and civil service says, no, you're okay, you're all clear to go, but Certification Office takes it entirely different direction? And, you know, we can see these kind of things in the court system where, you know, somebody might not be guilty of a crime, but then they are found guilty of having civil damages, you know? And so I'm just really concerned about whether or not we're creating two different due process systems, and are we allowing for the individual to have the same, the same gamut of rights under this new system? I've been reading through these rules governing the standards of professional conduct for Guam educators. I've read through the bill, and like, there's just a bunch of things that jump into my mind, like, for example, an appeal. You know, let's say the Certification Office says no, you know, and you want to appeal it, you know, how do you go about going through that process? So these are just, just some questions I guess I would like to have answered, and maybe the first one will be, is, does this create a whole new second due process system? And if it does, what happens when it's in conflict with potential findings from civil service versus Certification Office? And, and why can't we just make this also be part of what civil service looks at, as opposed to giving this whole new authority to the Certification Office? Right now, the Certification Office, their job is to certify educators, say, here's your certificate, you are qualified to educate our young people. What we're trying to do now, this bill, is to create a way for that very same office to revoke those certificates. And I'm not, I'm not too keen on the idea of having an entirely second body being able to affect employees that way. If the individual commits, commits an infraction even based on these standards, I'm comfortable with it going through civil service. At least those processes are in place, they've vetted, they've been tested. Maybe they can continue to be improved, I don't know. But to create a whole new process of the Certification Office, I'm not, I'm not too keen on it yet. And so I guess I'd like to start out by asking that first question. Why can't we just make these, make these standards and these, these findings and these outcomes also be a part of the civil service process?
Madam Speaker, do you yield?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. And, and of course, that is a very good question, but one have to remember is that when you're talking about certain professions, that there are requirements of that profession. And doctors will have to go through their own to get licensed, nurses, lawyers, engineers, public accountants, basically all professionals. And we, educators are the only ones who don't. And the reason for the creation of the Certification Commission was to do just that, was that one is to, first of all, come up with their rules and regs in which they would be how, what would be the criteria to issue out certificates, educator certificates. And then the next step, which is exactly what the Commission is doing by law, is to come up now with rules and regs to be able to revoke those. Right now, we all know is that we have one well-known case, cases, that's going through for the rank and file of our public employees, and through the Commission, the Civil Service Commission. And you know how long that has taken. And at the time when we're dealing then with already crimes that have been committed, ethical standards that have been violated based on, on the law, these are all mandates that we're talking about here. We're not talking about anything really different with the exception maybe of, like I said, the last one is moral turpitude that wasn't, that is not defined by, by law. And that process through Civil Service Commission is taking forever. And, and that means, and I ask everyone here who have children in our school system, do you want your child to continue to be in the classroom where you have an educator who has abused your child, whether physically or sexually, while we wait for Civil Service Commission to make a decision? I really hope not. And, and like, as I said, there is, yes, the court system, there is the appeal process, and they can appeal to the court. But once already it had, a decision has been made, the individual has been convicted, and there is a process as well to reapply. They have to stay out for a certain period of time, and then they can reapply, and they reassess again. But, you know, a Commission who gives, issues a certificate must also have that authority to take that away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Snickless, is that satisfactory?
It does, it does explain the mechanism by which the Certification Office would work, and it does compare it to other professions. But for me, I'm, I still have my concern about, you know, why can't we just allow civil service to have the same, the same powers? And if the, if the point is that, you know, civil service takes too long, that's part of the adjudication process. And if it's, if it's a, if it's a, an operational issue where they need more investigators or they need more, you know, support staff or whatever, then, then that's something that we should be fixing. But to, to say that we're going to be having this secondary process ongoing because the civil service process is taking too long, I just, I'm not, I'm not comfortable that, you know, having this second process is, is the right, is the right way for us to be going. I think that if we give the same powers to Civil Service Commission for them to be able to revoke certificates based on their findings, then everything will be consistent. The Civil Service Commission will be the one determining if something was done wrong as per what the employee was supposed to do. And it'll just become another tool in the toolbox of civil service with respect to how they meet out whatever their findings are with respect to the individual employee. But I just don't know about, about, about having the Certification Office revoking certificates as a, as a means to fast-track adjudication that may be taking too long in civil service. I mean, can you imagine if we fast-tracked it in certification and they revoked the certificate only to come back from civil service and civil service says, you know, based on our findings, the individual has no, no issues? Then what happens? I mean, if the only other result after that is for the individual to go to court, not only are they going to court to reinstate their certificate, they'll be going to court to get back pay and wages, they'll be going to court to get compensation for the damage to their reputation? So I'm, I'm not, I don't know, Mr. Speaker. And then, and so I guess the, the second question I have is what happens if there's a, if there's a conflicting finding between something that the Civil Service Commission was looking at and the finding that the Certification Office had? What happens then when a certification gets revoked, the civil service comes back and says the individual was innocent?
Mr. Speaker, that would only happen, of course, if we're going to say that they're going to go through civil service. What this does is that there is an investigatory body, it's the Attorney General who be, or an officer from the Attorney General's Office who will do the investigation. I mean, what better, you know, person can you get as an investigator? Because a lot of the items here that are listed are part of, of the GCA, our laws. In addition, is that, so there won't be that conflict, because then once, you see, this has happened and the individual is convicted in the court, I mean, the court has made a decision, but you know as well as the judges that individuals have actually appealed even the decision of, of the judge. And therefore, are we going to say we're going to go ahead and continue to have the individual be in the classroom, exposing himself or herself to the students while we wait for the courts to make a decision? I mean, if this passes, of course, it doesn't go through civil service, so there won't be that conflict in terms of the investigation or decision, because it will be done by, like I said, an Attorney General officer, and then it'll go before the committee. And then there, and then there is, of course, they're not closing the door entirely, because there is guidelines, there are guidelines for consideration for the restoration of their application, to make sure, most importantly, is that this, that the cause in which the individual's certificate was suspended or revoked no longer exists. And I'm not, this is not meant to just go after, you know, everyone. There are just, you know, some incidences, of course, that really stand out, and I know many times we don't hear about it. And I, I'm, in my closing, I'll share some of those things that have actually happened as a, when I was a school administrator, and how difficult it was to go through the process. And so, but anyway, there shouldn't be that conflict if it goes as recommended by the bill, that then the investigator would come from the Attorney General's Office. There has to be a notarization of any form that's going to be filed.
Thank you very much. You still have the floor, Senator Snickless.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, I mean, I, there's all kinds of things written in here on the, on these rules and regs that are, that are to be adopted as, as part of the exhibits. And, you know, when you look through them, some of them are crystal clear, you know, very, very clear, that, you know, criminal, if you're convicted of, of a criminal activity, those kind of things, I mean, that's very clear. The, the danger lies in those areas that are open to interpretation. And, you know, for example, on standard nine of professional conduct, you know, you have any behavior or conduct detrimental to the health, welfare, discipline, or morals of students. You know, any conduct that impairs or diminishes the certificate holder's ability to function professionally in his or her employment position, knowingly and intentionally denying or impeding a colleague in the exercise or enjoyment of a professional right or privilege in being an educator, knowingly and intentionally distorting evaluations of colleagues. I mean, some of these are pretty clear, but some of these also, I mean, you know, it's just the kind of thing where if you, if you step on the wrong toe and it turns into a whole new thing. My, my parents were educators in the system, my wife is currently a, an educator in the system. One of the things that are very common is, for example, the grievance process, you know, and somebody filing a complaint against somebody else, and that having to go through its, its, its whole due process channels. And so the, the concern of creating this whole new mechanism by which accusations can surface and certifications can get taken away outside of the existing civil service process, you know, just, it creates, again, a whole new level of due process that, that I think can really just be absorbed by civil service and exercised by the, by the administrative functions of the department. The Certification Office is not proven or tested in this area at all, and now we're all of a sudden going to be giving them broad powers with respect to being able to go in and revoke certificates. They've done a great job of issuing certificates, but the revocation of certificates based on accusations and findings of fact, having them have to go through discovery, I mean, even if they're using investigators from the Attorney General's Office, it, it still is what it is, and that's a brand-new process. And, and if the intent is to protect our, our kids, you know, of course, we're going to do everything we can to protect them. Perhaps what we should be doing is incorporating this within the civil service structure and, and allowing, allowing these things, the certificates in particular, which is basically what this whole bill is targeting, the revocation of teaching certificates. Perhaps we just need to give that very same authority to the, to the adjudicating power that, that currently exists within the civil service process. So I just wanted to make those, those statements clear for, for the benefit of my colleagues to consider. Anything to protect our kids is absolutely something I can support, but we also need to also, we also need to make sure that we're protecting the system in which our kids are getting educated and the professionals who are responsible for doing that. And while there may, there always will be bad apples in the organization, due process is something that we always need to protect for everybody, especially the good teachers and the good educators in our system. Because the bad apples can spoil the bunch, but a spoiled system with respect to the professionals in that system, I think is going to be bad for everybody. So I would just like for us to consider maybe that this should be another process within the civil service, the civil service system. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Melintiaco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I share some of the same sentiments as the retiring speaker. I do disagree, though, that the Civil Service Commission, you know, shouldn't be tasked with teacher certifications or the revoke, vocation thereof. I mean, they're, they're in charge with adverse action appeals and grievances, and it should remain that way. My main concern, though, with the bill, and, and if the author will, will yield or provide some explanations as to it, is I understand the intent, and I fully agree with the fact that they need to ensure that those that are part of the education system and that are teachers, you know, are, are of that same, you know, moral character that we would otherwise want or, or expect from our teachers. My concern, though, is that the revocation of the certification, the teaching certification, is going to come at the expense of, let's say, a bad decision or some violation of law thereof, which has an entirely different avenue to settle those grievances or, or conflicts or criminal acts or civil acts. Therefore, there's already remedies for that. To, to just, a teacher goes through the process of receiving her teaching certification, and they meet whatever criteria they, they need to meet in order to, to be able to teach, right? They, they have garnered the experience and education necessary in order to teach. The revocation of that teaching certification should not be dependent on what this bill basically attempts to do. I'm not sure that they're, they should be dealt with in the same manner. I'm not sure that the revocation of the teaching certificate is warranted if, if they, if they are, they are going through the due process, as was previously discussed, for resolving any allegations regarding criminal or civil acts. So I, I understand the intent, and, and I agree with the intent. So I, I understand the intent, and, and I agree with the intent, but I'm not sure that the reva, giving the board the right to revoke those teaching certificates is necessarily the remedy or the solution. And if the author would yield and, and speak on that, I, I, I'm going to keep an open mind and try and understand. I, I, I know the intent, I know what they're trying to do, but why aren't we just going through the normal channels for remedy, uh, to, to resolve those, those issues?
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. They, they would actually, based on whatever the mandates are that, that I've, I've read off, uh, that are in the mandate, that they would actually go through that whole, uh, process. So, and that means to be vetted in the court, the courts will make, uh, a decision, the individual is convicted. The question there, however, now, so you get a teacher who is convicted and, um, but still holds a certificate for 10 years or whatever the issuing date is for, and they will be able then that even during their convictions, served their time, have gotten out, what have you, because their certificate is still active, then they can take that certificate and now then go to another school, maybe not at, at the DOE schools, but go to another school, whether it's on island or to any one of our islands, uh, in our neigh, our neighbors, neighboring islands, or even to the mainland. And I say this primarily because as a, and maybe I'm going a little bit too much, but, but that's the reason, that, uh, a court system will go through the whole process and then later on, uh, there must be that revocation so that, that certificate cannot be used, um, you know, in another, um, school setting.
And, and if the author would, uh, yield to another question, because I, I'm not sure, I, I understand the full process, but in, in regards to the certification process, are there any oaths that these teachers take that define these mandates or these, these criteria that are, are, are in this bill? Basically, uh, for doctors, right? I believe they have the Hippocratic oath. I'm not sure what, what the oaths are for lawyers, but there, there's some sort of criteria that basically saying, "As part of this certification, you are agreeing to, you know, certify or attest to that these are part of your certification criteria." It, does such a mechanism exist as part of the teacher certification process?
Unfortunately, um, there isn't one formal. Uh, I know that we've created our own in our individual schools that we say what, you know, like in our mission statement, uh, as educators, and that varies from school to school, but there really isn't, you know, like you, like you alluded to a doctor's Hippocratic oath, that that's not, that we don't have one formal one. I may be wrong, I, I can also yield to Senator Yamashita if she knows, but I'm not aware of any formal oath.
Good, because I think that if that was incorporated into the teacher certification, you know, when you have a teacher certify and, and, or receive this certification, you know, and I'm not sure if it's possible to incorporate it into the bill, but it, it just seems that so you've, you've already, you've already, uh, agreed and attested to this certification, you've made this oath as part of your certification, then, then I can see how this would apply, um, because basically you, you are, you are making that part of this certification process, and therefore you are holding them accountable for it. And, and at that point, I can see, yes, then if, if that were to be done, I can see the, um, how this could be germane and, and how that, that could be a remedy to the revoke, revocation of the certification, you know, after the, uh, resolution of if it's a criminal act or a civil act, et cetera. You know, so i- is that, is that something that the author would, uh, would entertain? And would, could it be incorporated into this bill?
Yeah, I, I like to see you write how it is. I think it's an excellent idea. I know I like to call the Certification Office to, that maybe prior to the issuance of it, that definitely they make that oath. Uh, I, I know that I've attended some, like, pre-graduation ceremonies by educators and nurses and social workers like that, and they have their own oath, but not, like I said, there's not none that I know of. And that is definitely something, I think it's a great idea that it also be done at the School of Education, uh, it be done at the commission, and it's a sworn statement, just like when we swear our officers in that they must take that oath of, you know, to serve. So I, I like, I actually like that idea, but I, I wouldn't be able to craft the, the wordings for it right now, because I think it has to be, uh, something that must be discussed in, in the excellent place, of course, like I said, the School of Education, the University of Guam, and the Certification Office, because they, they do represent all certificated professionals within the department.
Okay, one, one last question, and that's in regards to, uh, any signed declaration of code of ethics, and, and whether or not those code of ethics are incorporated into the bill, because that would, I think for me, that would suffice to say, "Okay, you, you, we've identified these code of ethics that are required for your certification, you have, you have recognized, acknowledged, and signed that you, you agreed to adhere to those code of ethics." Then I, then I definitely can support, um, the board's authority to revoke that provided there is a, um, a breach of those ethics, just like how it's done with the, the Pills, the Pills Board or, or the, uh, the Law Review Board for, for lawyers. And I can under, so there is a process for that, they've agreed to those code of ethics, it's part of your certification process, and then, yes, I can support that. But thank you for, Mr. Chair, thank you. My, my questions have been answered.
And, uh, I, I know you're right, I'm looking at the time, and maybe this is something I can bring up, because the Certification Officer, you know, and the LA is on educators out there as well, and they're kind of signaling to me that there may be one, and I think, and I'm hoping that there, there is, and I'd like to bring it up this afternoon.
Okay, but, um, I'd just like to take Senator Tom Addis, since we've already gone past lunch. You had a comment, and hopefully she'll be able to address it if there's going to, so that we can either just close it.
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker. I, um, you know, I just had a, um, a question about, of course, when, when disciplinary action is taken against a, a teacher, um, it's, it's an adverse action. Now, we, we, I'm not sure whether this here precludes then that employee from going to, uh, to the Civil Service Commission after this. And so, so then, let's say, basically, the commission takes away my teaching certificate. Uh, that's the only thing I know how to do, is to teach. So now they've taken away my means of livelihood. Uh, so then this thing goes, so I would imagine they'll file to Civil Service Commission. Does that, does that put a stay on, on that, on the pulling of that certificate? I don't know. It's not clear. The other question, the only other question that I had, and I, I noticed there was on two pages here, was this thing about when a reprimand, when a written admonishment is issued to the teacher, uh, that that, uh, document, uh, will be kept in the teacher's file but must be expunged, um, on the case of reprimands after two years, as long as the offense does not occur. So I guess if, um, if, uh, reprimand number one is given and then, uh, at, at, towards the end of the second year, he gets another reprimand, does that reprimand continue to stay in and for how long? And so that, I noticed, was the same thing on page four under 3.16, reprimand, and the same thing, uh, under, uh, 3.25, on page five there, about the warning, that a warning, the commission must expunge all records of an, uh, an educator pertaining to a warning after one year, as long as the offense does not occur. So it would seem that, you know, uh, reprimand number one should have a, after 12 months, uh, gets expunged, uh, and he may have gotten reprimand number two, six months into the year. So I, I think that just needs to be clarified, because it seems that then that, if it reoccurs again, it just kind of gives it continuous life. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Addis. Madam Speaker, please take those questions into consideration during the lunch break. We'll return at 2:30.